To the chat. We have, we're expecting a good crowd tonight, so we just wanted to give a couple of minutes for people to trickle in. And a few of our candidates are still coming in from another event. And while we're doing that, we thought it might be fun to do a little APS trivia. For those who may or may not know information about our district, since that's the topic tonight. So, Betty, is the, is the chat open? Okay, so the chat is open, so you can answer these trivia questions in the chat as we're waiting for folks to come in. So the first question is, what year was APS as a district established? What year was Atlanta Public Schools established? See if we've got anybody brave enough to get us started off here. I think if you can get the decade right.
Yeah, it's. Do I have to put it in the chat, or can I just chat?
You, you can, you can say it.
It's about one hundred and fifty years ago.
That's exactly right, yeah. So it's eighteen, eighteen seventy-two, so Francois was just a hundred years off, very close, almost exactly right there. All right, second question, what were the first two high schools? That were established in eight seven, eighteen seventy-two in APS? What were the first two high schools in APS established in eighteen seventy-two?
So can I talk to that too?
Sure.
Or do you want me to put it in the chat?
Let's put it in the chat for equity's sake.
Okay, all right, hold on, just give me a minute.
Got a Grady answer in there?
Of course, I have a Washington and a Grady answer. Um, okay, hold on, you're killing me with the chat. Um, okay, I'm gonna put in, uh, Washington. Then, of course, my colleagues can, you know, speak on their own behalf. Uh, Washington and Grady.
All right, Ms. Jones is correct with one of them, and the other one was Girls High. Very creative with naming in eighteen seventy-two.
Yep.
All right, Betty, how are we on candidates? Are we all there?
Yep, everybody's here.
All right, well, then let's get started. I have a lot more trivia questions, but you know what? We can do that anytime. So we want to thank you all for being here. First of all, we just want to thank the candidates for being here, especially after having another forum tonight. It shows a lot to our community for being willing to come out tonight. I'm Taylor Cross, I am one of the PTA co-presidents at Tumor Elementary. And we have put on this forum tonight. Just to allow the opportunity for folks on the east side of Atlanta. And specifically in the Jackson Cluster, the ability to hear from all of their board member candidates. For District Three, which is where the tumor and a lot of the Jackson Cluster resides, but also the seven and nine at-large districts. So the protocols for tonight will be that we are going to have the chat feature turned off during the Q and A session. So Betty will have that turned off. And the mute function will be on for participants. So I, as the moderator, will ask pre-submitted questions that folks have been submitting through our Google form when they registered, as well as on Instagram. But folks, we'll have the ability to use a feature called Slido, where they will be able to, as this forum goes along, they'll be able to ask questions. In addition to the predetermined questions, and they'll have the ability to upvote questions, so that we can see what is rising as a priority during the forum. And as time allows at the end, we can ask some questions that have populated four folks as the forum has gone on. And to make the answering smoother for our candidates, what we're gonna do is we're gonna have an order that the candidates will follow for each question. So each candidate will have the opportunity to answer each question. And the order we're gonna go in is just numerical order of the districts. We're gonna start with District Three, then Seven, and then Nine. And we'll start each time with the incumbent. So for example, for the first question, Ms. Olympiades would answer first. Then Mr. Zeph, followed by Ms. Jones, then Mr. Brooks, and it would continue on that way. This just allows each candidate to know exactly when they're speaking. And they don't have to wonder when, when they can they jump in and when not, just to keep things smooth. We also would like to remind everyone that we are recording this, just for the purpose of being able to share it for those who could not attend. We will be sharing this on social media, on the Friends of Tumor Elementary Facebook page, for anyone who may miss it. So the schedule for this evening is gonna be a short introduction by each candidate. Each candidate is going to be able to introduce themselves, and then we have six pre-submitted questions that I will ask one after the other. Candidates will answer in the order that I established a second ago. So we'll go ahead and get started at that, at that rate. So candidates will follow that order I mentioned, so if you could right now, please introduce yourself by providing your name, the seat you're running for, and then if you could describe yourself in one sentence. That's what we're looking for for this first part. Your name, what you're running for, and introduce yourself in one sentence. So we'll begin with Ms. Olympiades.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you could hear me. Um, hey, it's Michelle Olympiades. I, I live in District Three. I have been serving on the board for the past two terms. I'd like to serve another term. I have three children who've gone through APS. Uh, PTA President, Local School Council, Cluster Advisory, and obviously School Board. So I, I've, I've, I've done a little bit of my term, so to speak. And would like to continue this for another term, if not longer. Thank you.
Hey, you just want us to jump in? Awesome. Hey, I'm Ken Zep, welcome, hello, Tumor, Tumor World. I'm Ken Zep, I'm a parent of three kids here in, in the cluster. And one sentence, I'm former superintendent, nonprofit executive, and someone that believes wholeheartedly that Atlanta Public Schools' best days are ahead of it. If we just, we get focused on discipline, on leadership, and moving this district forward, I'm excited, really excited about the future of Atlanta Public Schools.
All right, Ms. Jones?
Hi, thanks for having us all here. I'm Tamara Jones. I am a mom of three. Been an APS parent for seventeen years. One sentence, again, I'm a mom. I am an urban planner, and I'm a public servant.
All right, thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Hi, I was trying to get logged in on my computer. I was on the phone as we were en route. My name is Alfred Shivi Brooks. I'm running to be the first active teacher to ever be elected to the Atlanta Public School Board. I am running for Seat Seven at Large. I live in the custom McDonough-Geis neighborhood. And before living here for seven years, I lived in Eastlake. Where my son began his education journey at Eastlake Elementary. I'm a thirteen-year APS parent. Honored to be with you all. If I were to describe myself in one sentence is that I'm a person who believes that education is more of a ministry than anything else. And so I show up in a classroom every day, because this is the fabric of who I am as a person and what I believe is the way to get real change. Thank you.
All right, I believe I am next. I'm Jessica Johnson, Atlanta Public School Board at Large, Seat Nine. I am running to retain my seat on the board. I am a bold educational innovator that is committed to ensuring that regardless of zip codes, every one of our students receives the tools and resources they need to be college and/or career-ready.
Good evening, I am Nkoyo Effiong Lewis. I am a former teacher and attorney and education attorney, have represented parents and students in special education and school discipline matters. And I am an APS mom. I've had one child graduate through in twenty twenty-one, who happened to be neurodiverse. And know what it's like to advocate. And I have two small kids, four and two, who are getting ready to start their APS journey. And so I believe that I am an empathetic leader who understands diverse perspectives and the complexity of the work that we are going to do, and is willing to show up every single day and make room at the table for each and every one of us. To ensure that we are delivering an excellent education for every cluster, every classroom, and every child.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate those introductions. Those are very, very helpful. So we'll jump right into our questions at this point. Like I said, we have six predetermined questions. They're gonna start a little more broad, and then they're gonna get a little more specific. Some specifically related to the area that, you know, we're representing today, which is the Jackson Cluster and the east side of the Jackson Cluster. So first question, and we'll follow the same order that we, we were just in, and candidates, if you could limit your answer to around one minute, just so that we can get through all of these questions, and then hopefully have time for questions that have been populated by the audience as well. We would appreciate that. So the first question is, what do you see as the primary responsibility of a school board?
Okay, so does that come to me first? Okay, okay, I apologize. Um, yes, our responsibility is to ensure that our schools have what they need to to function properly. And yes, we've had a bit of a struggle making sure that that happens. However, we have taught to principals and have worked with principals throughout the district to ensure that we are providing the, the supplements that we need to, to provide the the, the supplements, the, the extra work that we need. Be it reading, be it reading, I, I will say is a big one for me. But, you know, making sure that we have what we need to make sure that schools have what they need. And that we've had struggles with over administrations. However, I do believe we're working in the right direction at this point, to make sure that this is a priority, especially with reading. To ensure that, that, that our students are getting what they need to, that they graduate with something that's responsible. There's, to be quite frank, and I, I got one minute, I got it. But to be quite frank, there's a disparity between thirty percent third grade literacy and eighty-four percent graduation rate. There's, there's a gap there that needs to be addressed, and there are several board members who are advocates about changing that trajectory, and I'm definitely on that board.
So the, the board has two primary functions. The question is, what is, what is the responsibility of the board? What's, what's my vision of what the board should do? The board's main job are twofold. Hire and fire the superintendent, manage the superintendent, and pass a budget. That's, there, there's policy, there's some other pieces, but those are the main levers that, that the, the school board uses to to improve education, be the voice of the community in our system. And in both of those measures, I think we're, we're not meeting, we're not, not meeting the mark. Our budget is, is not addressing the needs of our schools. The central office has grown twenty percent a year. From two hundred million to two hundred forty million, that's dollars that could be at our school, could have a more resourced school. And superintendent, we're about to hire our fourth superintendent in five years. That churn, that, that takes a toll on our, on our teachers, on our community. And so we can get this right, if we, if we buckle down and we get disciplined, we can push resources out to schools. And more importantly, we can find a leader that can execute the will of the, of this, of the school board, and keep that leader, and build stability, and build a, a system that our, our city needs and our kids deserve.
Sorry, it took me a minute to get off mute. Yes, so the primary responsibilities of a school board are to hire, support and evaluate a superintendent. To approve a budget, to create policy, and to represent the collective values and will of the community that we represent. The question really is, how do we do that? And establishing the kinds of structures, processes, you know, that enable us to engage with the community. It enable us to really manage a budget, to develop a budget, set parameters into it transparently, and to have a evaluation tool for the superintendent, and, you know, according to preset, you know, agreed-upon values, is going to be critical. So I think the devil is more in the details of how an effective board works, because it's pretty clear what our, our role is. And I'm determined, you know, to work with the rest of my colleagues, that we've been doing, you know, to make sure that we're working together as best we can.
Thank you. So the, there are a couple of things, and we've heard that the answer is repeated, what, what the responsibility of our school board members are, which is essentially to approve a budget, which, in the case of our budget, we have sixty percent of our dollars going towards central office, and only forty percent of our dollars going towards the school. So we're clearly not doing what we should be doing as it pertains to budgeting. But also, our school board is responsible for hiring, managing, and retaining a superintendent. But also, and, and this is something that I believe really needs to be highlighted. Our school board is also responsible for interpreting state law. So when state law comes down the pipe, what we do with it, how much teeth we give policy or don't, that also is the purview of the school board. And I think that's something that has to be brought up, especially at a time where now we're getting a lot of bills that come from the State House that could have some very extreme consequences for our learners and our families. So thank you for the opportunity to answer that question.
All right, good evening again. Definitely agree with a number of my colleagues around hiring and managing the superintendent. What I would add to that is setting clear vision and goals to help guide the district in, and those, and putting policies and making sure that there's an infrastructure in place that will help to guide the implementation of work that improves our student outcomes across the district. Also, the governance and oversight, so I currently serve on the budget and audit committee, so providing that oversight and governance for the key business of the district is a really important role that school board members have. We talked about the budget, we talked about some of the compliance issues and, and some of the logistical issues around that. And then finally, really to serve as an advocate for the community, for parents, to make sure that, that, that information is trickling up to administration when policies are not working. Or we have some, some adjustments that need to be made, and being that same voice and advocate for teachers and administrators throughout the district. And definitely, as we consider some of the big decisions that are coming up in the next six, six months, including hiring the next superintendent and passing a one-point-six or one-point-seven billion-dollar budget at this point, we want to make sure that you all are being considerate of the right leadership to take on those tasks.
I think it's fair.
Thank you again, Nkoyo. I'm running for at-large Seat Nine. I think my colleagues here have shared what the role is, and I think the role of the school board is clear. So what I would love to share with you is what I think my role would be as a member on the board. And I think that, given sort of my background in, in legal background, in the classroom background, as a parent and someone who has sat with parents, sometimes in the most vulnerable and uncomfortable circumstances, it's for bringing that perspective to the work, to the policy that we're setting, to the conversation about selecting the type of superintendent who can move APS into its next best chapter, into our conversations about the budget and where we reallocate resources, and how we empower and equip all of our stakeholders to really engage inside of this process. And so I think one of the things that I bring to the table that I could really help continue to advance what's going on in our district is really having an eye for what dynamic leadership looks like, what it takes to change and navigate through all of the complexity that comes with change, so that we can shift a culture and move into a space and time where our district is able to meet the needs of all of our children and all of our communities. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And Ms. Lewis, that's a nice segue, I think, to where we're headed next. And I think what we would like to do here, I think this might be in the, the vein of Equity, which will be a question coming up soon, is let's reverse the order for this next question, Ms. Lewis, so you're not always at the back. Does that, does that fair? Okay, so why don't we just kind of go back and forth? We won't totally mix up the order, but if we could go back and forth per question, maybe that would, would balance things out a little bit, okay? All right, so the next question is, pertains to something a couple of you mentioned. So obviously, there have been a few superintendents that have, have come and gone in the recent years. What would you specifically be looking for in our next superintendent? And how do you believe that the board can ensure that we're not repeating this process again?
Again, right, right.
Begin with Ms. Lewis, and then go backwards.
This is a fantastic question. I think it gives us an opportunity to reflect on how we have gotten here and what we can learn from this experience so far. So I think one of the things that I think is really important for where APS is today and where I would love to see APS be four years from now, eight years from now, ten years from now, you know, a decade, generation from now, is really finding a leader who understands our shared governance system and is willing to and able to engage in all of our communities and build the relationships that they need to have there to make sure that we're doing this work alongside the community. I always say I do not believe that we can educate children well. We cannot do that and be an enduring system, separate and apart from the communities where our children come. And so I think it's really important that we have a leader who understands and is invested in our shared governance model, so that we can really see that flourish, and that we can have the support at around our go teams and in our clusters that's needed to allow the community to have more of a voice in determining what needs to happen and how we solve problems. I also think it's incredibly important where we are right now, and we're looking at technology, artificial intelligence, and how quickly the world is changing, and how the rate of change is accelerating. That we have someone who is future-focused and, and has an eye on what not only our students need right now, but what they're going to need in a future that is unknown and unknowable for all of us. I think, again, as a board member, one of the things that I would love to make sure that we're doing is backwards planning around what success looks like, and what outcomes we are measuring and holding our superintendent accountable to, so that we can have laser focus in getting there, and really making sure that the board as a whole is managing and supporting that superintendent to outcomes. So that we can see the success from all the hard work that we're all putting in. Thank you.
Okay, so I think that our number one priority should be to identify a superintendent who is about the business of improving and increasing our student outcomes, when we look at our literacy and numeracy rates. And even the fact that although we have a higher than eighty percent high school graduation rate, and only twenty percent of our students are graduating from college, I really want someone who has worked in a comparable-sized school district who has a track record of increasing student outcomes. I think it's also equally important for that person to understand the business of the district and understand opportunities for us to eliminate waste across the district and push more money directly to the school, so we can restore some of the autonomy that is needed for our principals and our school leaders to really make strong decisions about the learning and the opportunities for their students to learn across that district. And then finally, someone who is really leaning into the accountability and transparency. We know that with the shift in the superintendence, we've lost some trust. And it's gonna be really important for our next leader to be authentically engaged in the community in a way that builds, restores that trust, but also gives people a seat at the table in some of our key decisions. And then what the board can do is, the first, most important thing is really ensure that there is a firm handoff between our next leader and our current leader, Dr. Battle, and make sure that she stays on board and gives it enough time to ensure that, that onboarding process is really done well. And then that we start with really clear performance measurement, measurement tools in place that hold that person accountable and provide the frequent feedback to make sure we're all on track.
So I'm glad that Jessica led with, you know, having the transition between the current interim superintendent.
Jones, I'm sorry, we reversed the order, so I'm, I'm sorry, we did that midway, so we're, we're going back this time. No, it's, 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 it's a tricky thing, but we just wanted to make sure everybody, you know, had a chance to go early and late, and that was a change, so we apologize for that.
Taylor, in all, in all fairness, I would love to concede the opportunity for her to go ahead and answer that question, since she started.
No, no, you go, you, no, you go, I'm ready, I'll go next.
Okay, I guess I got it. Look, this is, this, the, the conversation around the superintendent is one of the most important conversations that we can have right now, and, and I really wish we would pay a little bit more attention to this specific topic. First off, like, right now, our current board has already created a profile for the next superintendent. That profile has not been shared with the public, we don't know how that works, and they have hired a headhunting firm based upon this profile that we don't know. Mind you, we are going to have new board members potentially in two weeks, less than two weeks. And so now we're gonna be talking about having to go through the hiring process based upon a profile that has already been created and has already, the, the train has already started to leave. So that's, in my opinion, it's kind of like handling the process in a way where we are really considering the outcomes is a big thing that we have not done well thus far. Other things are, listen, we have to have someone who knows Atlanta. We have two hundred and forty-two neighborhoods in the city of Atlanta. And if you don't authentically understand and know Atlanta, that will cause you a lot of troubles, as we're here trying to navigate the different nuanced needs of different neighborhoods, and neighborhoods that are rapidly changing. We have to have a superintendent that is hyper-focused on literacy and a superintendent that is hyper-focused on culture. We have had a lot of turnover when it comes to our principals, and that high turnover with principals causes high turnover with teachers. And there are a lot of consequences that go along with that. So for me, I want a superintendent who is so serious about hiring the best quality people, who also create the best environments, climate, and culture for our schools, which will then get the best outcomes for our babies. Lastly, I refuse to vote for any superintendent who has not served in a classroom and served as a principal. We need someone who knows what it's like to be on the ground. We see what happens when we have school boards that are predominantly comprised of people who have never served in classrooms, and it comes out in our outcomes. So what I'm offering to you all is the same reason why so many people are excited about our candidacy, why we are supported by the AFL-CIO, the North Georgia Labor Council, why we are supported by American Federation of Teachers, is because there has to be a centering on the experience of classroom workers, on principals, on administrators, when it comes to our school boards and making decisions. And that's the same way I feel about our superintendent. We have to have someone who's actually been in the trenches, because teachers will trust them. And they will be led by practical knowledge, not theory. Thank you.
Now it's my turn, right? Okay, thanks. A lot of the things that have been said I agree with, and so just to lead off with, the, the board has not developed a profile of a superintendent. That is something that we're gonna develop with, in conjunction with the community, you know, with the, the search committee that, that we're working with. So that is not something that the board has done, just so that everybody can breathe a little bit easier. But to go back to what Jessica was saying about the interim handoff, and what's unique about this situation we have now, you know, I've been in the system since Beverly Hall was a superintendent, is we do have an interim superintendent in place now for a year, and she does have deep knowledge, twenty years of experience with APS. So this is not like any transition that we've had before, and I do think that it sets us up for a lot of success potentially. I agree that somebody needs to understand Atlanta, and that someone, an effective superintendent is going to need to embrace that collaboration that's required to make that climate change, and that's willing to share the power, willing to view the go teams and the cats as, you know, advisory bodies to give the teachers and the community members and the parents the voice. Also able to focus on a few key leaders, like literacy, that are going to make a huge difference. I also think it's important that we, you know, to both support and onboard and, you know, pave the path for success, that we have a board that has experience as board members, and also have a deep background knowledge of this particular school district, this city, and how we got to the point where we are right now.
Taylor, can I chime in?
Well, we're gonna have Mr. Zep go, and then you'll finish off this question, and then the next round, we'll flip back. So we're gonna have Mr. Zep.
Yeah, yeah, whatever you want to do, I'm, I'm. Yeah, yeah, whatever you want to do, I'm, I'm good, yeah, but can go, but no worries.
Yeah, so this is, let's just frame this issue because I think people, folks need to make sure that we have the whole trajectory here. It's our fourth superintendent in five years. So that means that teachers, administrators, it's not just superintendent that changes when the superintendent leaves, it's the administration. So this becomes a high stakes decision and the impacts of the system, because either not succession, it's not like the deputy is taking over or whatever, these are hard pivots that we're making and I think it has an impact. Look, what, what do I look for as someone that's been in this seat, you know, and I understand that it requires a little bit of magical thinking to think that we're going to put a five-page, uh, list of prior, of things that the superintendent is going to be able to do and they're going to be able to do them all perfectly, that you're going to be a great communicator and they're going to know everything about this and they know everything about that. We have so much diversity in our system, it's our strength. I think the two things that I'm looking for in, in a superintendent are the ability, the demonstrated ability to push out authority to our school systems or to our district, to our schools and our go teams in a responsible way. The answers for APS's woes and challenges are in our school systems. Nobody knows Tumor Elementary like the people on this call and, and not the people on the screen right now, but the people who are, who are, whose screens I can't see, but I know you're there somewhere. Those forty-six people know Tumor Elementary really well and we need to honor that knowledge and empower that and make sure those folks have that, that, their, their voice in this work is going to make our teachers happy and going to make our principal happy. And, and the second thing is demonstrated proficiency with literacy. Have they, have they implemented a comprehensive literacy strategy? If we get those two things right, the rest of the list is great, but I, I look to past performance of, of that, of demonstrating that ability and that's what's going to make this next decision. That is, because not just hiring this person, but managing this person, but we can get the right person with, if we look at their past performance.
Okay, so my, uh, Taylor, am I up now?
Michelle, you are.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I saw you on mute, so I just wanted to make sure. You know, I think we've been doing pretty good in District Three. I mean, we're, we, we are way ahead of, um, the majority of the district and I try to help the majority of the district as well. But, I mean, I mean, Ms. Brown's great. I mean, y'all are, y'all are doing great. I mean, and Mr. White's great, Mr. White's doing great, Everett Burgess. Um, and then Mr. McKnight's doing great, Everett Drew. I mean, we have, we have great, we have great schools in District Three. What I will say is we have a lot of work to do in the rest of the district and we always have and, uh, and we will continue to have. And, 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 and I think I have a couple of colleagues who agree with me, there's a lot of work to do there and we will do it and we're trying to do it. But with respect to what's happening in District Three, I mean, we're doing good work, we've got good schools, we've got good leaders. We, like I said, we've got good schools. We're getting the work done. Our kids are having a very impactful and important educational impacts, which is very important. And to hear from parents about how they're happy with what their kids are receiving is very respectful, uh, with respect to serving on the board. And, and I'd like to say that's my work, but it's really not. It's the work of the principals in those schools who make the effort to make sure that their schools are providing the educational support that their kids need. And that, that, that's the kicker. And, you know, being on the school board is being on the school board and, you know, it's fine, happy to do that. I, um, I think we do our best to try to pull together policy. I think we try to pull together budget. We do have a very large budget, but, you know, pull together budget and policy to see what we can do to help out, uh, the entire district. But I think overall, um, we're, 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 we're trying very hard to manage what we can. And what I see with respect to District Three is we have community that's very committed to supporting.
Ms. Olympiades, I'm going to, I'm just going to, I hate to cut you off, but I just want to make sure we have time to get to a couple more questions, is that okay?
Of course, you can cut me off, no worries.
All right, thank you. So, uh, we're going to ask, um, we have a few more questions in line, um, we are aware of time, we know we started a little bit late, um, but we, we should be able to get through a couple more. We're reversing the order back again, once again, I apologize about that. So we're going to go Ms. Olympiades, Mr. Zef, Ms. Jones, uh, Mr. Brooks, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Lewis, we'll be back to the original order. This next question is about educational equity. What is your philosophy on educational equity and what is your commitment to allocating resources according to the places that need them most?
Wow, um. Okay, that's a huge question, yes. And when I say yes, it means, yes, we need to allocate resources to the kids who need us the most. That's always very important. And we have a lot of kids who need us the most and it's always been that way. Say with respect, I'm very happy to advocate, or I guess, I'm, I'm not, no, if I'm happy. I'm very willing, I think that's a better term, I'm very willing to advocate for kids who need us the most. Um, I think that's the right perspective. We have a lot of kids who need us. Uh, we've got, um, it's a little bit more than seventy-five percent of students in APS who need additional support and we need to figure out how to advocate for that and support that and, um, augment that. And, and again, whatever that means. We have a lot of friends who want to help us, meaning partners. And we just need to figure out how to tune them up and then, um, also understand where we are from a, from a I'm going to, I'm not going to find the right words. From a, a budget standpoint, we need to figure out where we are from a budget standpoint to, uh, augment how we can support our, our kids who need us the most because that's very, very important, it's very important.
Thanks, Taylor, and I think this equity question is at the heart of, of who we, who, who we are as, as, as a city. And let me just be clear, District Three schools, I think, are performing well, but I don't think it's because of the activity of, of, of the, the board, the supports the board's giving you. As a matter of fact, I, we've knocked down thirty-six hundred doors and throughout, you know, throughout District Three and spent a lot of time and I've seen so many Tumor Cougar signs. There is legit school pride in this community and it's, it's, it's inspiring. How, how do we think about, how do I think about equity? I think the budget is how, budgets are moral documents. And when we pass a budget that, that deprives schools of the resources that they need, then those schools have to go somewhere else for those resources. I'll give you an example at Midtown High School, which is where, where, where my kids are at. There's a Saturday school that kids get benefit from and they pay the teachers twice their, their daily rate, they get Chick-fil-A and there's, you know, what do we happen during COVID, we lost time, the teacher getting kids in the presence of content. So where does that money come from? A hundred percent of that paid for by the Midtown Foundation. Zero dollars from Atlanta Public Schools. How, that's where the equity, that's where we fall short in equity because we have to rely on other sources instead of getting the dollars from the school system. By the way, you're getting, your tax bill is on your desk right now, it went up nine percent. So when, yes, the, the District Three schools are performing, but it's not because of the support they're getting from the central office. If we reduce the footprint of the central office, we push resources out, you can have so much more, you can, you, you don't have, teachers won't have to reach into their pockets. The PTO, the PTSO, this, the, uh, the, all the various support organizations, there's enough dollars in the system to make it happen, we just have to be committed to pushing those dollars out, that is the way we achieve equity for all our kids throughout our system.
I think it's me now, right? Okay, um, so equity is ultimately meeting every child where they are with what they need. Um, and that is what we have to devote, you know, both our focus and our resources on. So one of the ways we do that, and I'm a big believer in our student success funding for, formula that we implemented, you know, um, a few years ago. What I think we can do better at is making sure that the base funding amount for every school, for every student is enough to fulfill the minimum standards of service, um, required by the district. And then, then we layer on, on all the weights, you know, for English language learners, for poverty weights, for, you know, every, all the other things that we know require more resources so that we're ensuring that we get more dollars where they're supposed to go. The other things we have to lean into are more of our partnerships, you know, uh, so that we can make sure that the whole child, you know, the whole, um, that we're giving kids wraparound services to get them ready to receive the educational, uh, benefits that we are able to give them, you know, academically and working with particularly community-based, um, organizations that are, you know, devoted to helping us do that and working with the city and the county like we do currently. I serve on the Joint Committee for Education with the city and the county, just to make sure that we're all pooling our resources. Another thing with respect to equity though, is to make sure that every child in every school, no matter what door you go through the building to get into, has access to the kind of acceleration and opportunities that they are ready for, no matter what school they go to. And we can do this, we may not be able to have fourteen, you know, stellar AP physics teachers at each high school, each of our fourteen high schools, but we can absolutely find a way for every student to be able to take that AP physics course. We owe it to all of our children to not only, um, supplement, you know, where they might need to be brought up, but also to provide them with the opportunities that they are entitled to, to accelerate. So, thanks.
Thank you so much, uh, for this, for this question. You know, equity is a, is a huge issue. Um, and, and I think we've gotten to the day and age where even the word equity itself has kind of become like inflammatory in some communities uh, and, and folks are afraid to really dig into what it actually, uh, means. In the city of Atlanta, we have the worst wealth disparity gap that exists in the entire country between black households and white, white households. We have the smallest opportunity for a person, uh, born in poverty to ever have upward mobility out of poverty in the country and that's four percent. The average black household is, is bringing in, uh, thirty-seven thousand, meanwhile, white counterpart to bring in a hundred and eight thousand. There is a big issue and disparity there and we see that across our schools from one side of town to another side of town. Um, I think, you know, many things were brought up that make a lot of sense, especially around, uh, say Midtown, for example. Like if a kid wants to play football in Midtown, you may pay a hundred and fifty dollars to be able to play there, but if you're over in Mays, it may cost you over a thousand dollars to be able to play because you don't have the, the foundational help, you don't have the supplemental help from the community, uh, to help the affordability. Uh, and so we, we see equity, uh, gaps there, even just in terms of what the community, uh, can do for the school. I, I think one of the first things that we can do to really fix the, the major inequities that we have is to tackle the bloat that we have in our budget where we're funding sixty percent of our dollars towards the central office and only forty percent of our dollars towards the school. Now, what you all just heard about the student success formula, I think is something that we should all be paying attention to. Because what you just heard was for us to disregard the things that create the inequities, like being an English language learner, like some of the other things that are stacked on top. So if you're increasing that base and then accounting for the rest, you're actually removing dollars from the kids who need it the most to fund kids who have resources. So I think like we, if we're going to have a conversation about this, we have to have a honest conversation and we got to be willing to acknowledge the disparity gaps that we have and where the needs really are and who needs to be addressed first and to whose benefit. If we talk about changing things, who benefits the most? And who actually needs the help and who is going to be hurt the most from that change? This is, this is sticky stuff, y'all, and it starts getting into the weeds, but the truth of the matter is, is our schools are not equitable and our outcomes are not equitable. Moreover, I appreciate that in the Tumor Custer over in Three, uh, folks are doing, doing well, right? Uh, at Tumor, doing well at Burgess. But if fifty percent of our kids are not reading on grade level, that's not well enough. If half of our kids are still failing, that's not good enough. As a teacher, I don't brag or tout about the ten percent or fifteen percent of my kids who perform at the highest level and ignore the fact that I'm missing out on helping all of the rest of the kids realize their promise. So we have to get away from this language that believing everything is okay, because it is not, it is not all okay. We have some serious work to do and this is why, it's very evident as we watch this, this Zoom tonight, why we need a change on this school board so badly. There is an emergency and there are some folks who are not even seeing it. Thank you.
So I'll share, this, this question is really personal for me because I, I before, prior to joining the board, I served on the APS Equity Advisory Board and had an opportunity to look at the data, but also had an opportunity to interview students across the district. And what really sits with me in this role is that so many of them already knew what they were missing out on and what students had access to at other schools and in other districts. Um, and, and that's not okay for us as adults and as leaders, for them to understand that they were getting less than um, in, in terms of their educational opportunities. And so I think one of the best ways and one of the boldest ways is really to just be unapologetic and eliminate the excuses about closing, um, the achievement gaps. And so I think that as a board, one way that I'm committed to doing that work as a member of the Budget Commission is really, um, looking at what are the other portions of the overall school budget that the district should have a responsibility to absorb? And so there's no reason that, you know, some schools have additional supports and others are making tough choices between paraprofessionals and school resource officers. And so there are a number of positions and resources that I think the district has to absorb so that schools can really focus on the additional resources that their students need to be able to excel and that's something we can absolutely do. Um, I do think it's time to reevaluate the student success formula and, and maybe how this, how it's weighted because we have huge gaps. So some of our schools are getting nine thousand dollars per student while other schools are getting twenty-five thousand dollars per student. And we have to say, what does that create in terms of a, a school's ability to make decisions to increase their learning outcomes? I would love to see more money being allocated to professional development, more money being allocated to ensure that every single school has, um, teachers who can teach the advanced and the accelerated courses in their district, that every single, um, English and language our teachers has been retrained in the science of reading. And, and that's going to take a shift of money that will probably more than likely come from central office and come from external contracts that we need to move towards what we say matters across the district and, and that's something that I'm looking forward to helping to navigate and facilitate over the next four years.
This is a lot of why I am here, running for this seat and the opportunity to be your next representative. I have been trying to attack this challenge, uh, for almost twenty years. Uh, in the classroom, like I, I made a point to go into the classroom to see how inequity is showing up in our spaces, what that looks like, how, even in the classroom setting, how we are sometimes grouping kids by ability, which then, um, creates tensions around who has access to different types of opportunities just based on sometimes, you know, whether a teacher has indicated that that child might need early intervention services or whether they have an IEP or a five oh four plan. I have been trying to solve for this issue by representing parents and students with special education matters. And I think that in a lot of that work, what I have found is that equity is a big term that we don't always really define and we're not always clear around.
is a big term that we don't always really define, and we're not always clear around what we're trying to solve for, which means that sometimes our solutions aren't as equitable as we would want them to be. And so when I think about equity, I think, you know, this is something that one has to be a habit, right? It's not a a policy. It is not words on paper. It has to be something that shows up in all of the ways that we're making decisions. And when we're thinking about making decisions, whether that's with money, whether that's with where we're allocating um supports and partnerships and how different communities are having to lean in, how families are having to to lean in and supplement things that they're unable to get from the district. Who has access? Who's included? Who's excluded? I think about equity when we even think about things like this. How do we make sure that people are able to engage in our system? How they are able to understand what the process is? How they can access the budget and understand what is being spent, particularly for those of us who are paying into the system? Um some of these things are just not accessible. And so uh I am absolutely deeply committed to making sure that we're allocating resources to address our issues of equity. And I think that that exists across lines of race, that exists across um place in terms of zip code, where you live in the city does unfortunately impact the the type of experience that you have in the schools. And I think we also need to look at what that looks like across lines of ability and sometimes even at the intersection of those places. We have students who are very vulnerable uh because we're only looking at one aspect of the problem, but we're not thinking about, well, how does income and ability impact a child's um dignity and experience in the school? How does that require different things from families? And so I would love to sit on the board to have a more nuanced conversation about what equity is and make sure that it's actually a habit, something that we're doing in every single thing that we put out, that we share with the community, that we're thinking about, so that people actually have a way to engage in the system as full participants of it, regardless of where they live, regardless of what type of education they receive, sometimes from our district as well. Um and and that we can all bring our gifts to the table to really solve a pervasive and persistent problem that's going to take each and every one of us reflecting on ourselves, what we bring to the table and working together to solve a problem that may not be our fault, but is our reality.
Thank you so much, candidates, um for those answers. We really appreciate those perspectives. Um so for this next question, we'll reverse the order once again. We will go uh Ms. Lewis to Ms. Johnson, to Mr. Brooks, to Ms. Jones, to Mr. Zeph and Ms. Olympiades. Um so this this next question is very nuanced. Um you all, of course, are virtually um in the tumor community tonight. And so this can be this this question specifically relates to our side of town. Um so over the past ten to twenty years, uh the historic uh schools in our communities have have closed, many of them. Whiteford Elementary closed in twenty seventeen as a traditional elementary school. Eastlake Elementary, um as mentioned prior, closed in twenty fifteen. Cohen Middle School served this area in twenty fourteen. It was closed. And Crem High School was a traditional high school that closed in two thousand and five, um you know, within our our neighborhoods as well. And as a result of all this, you know, we now have overcrowding um across the Jackson Cluster. We have um even overcrowding in in nearby areas as well. So the question, given that context, is what can the board do to ensure that, first of all, our schools are not overcrowded? But also that our community members have schools within their neighborhoods that they are able to attend?
Thank you for this question. I think it's incredibly important. Um I remember I coached teachers at Whiteford Elementary School. I have friends who taught at Cohen. Um Atlanta is a very different city today than it is when I was in the classroom or coaching teachers to reach ambitious outcomes for their students. And so, you know, when we close schools, it has ripple effects, right? And so I always think that first and foremost, we have to be very careful, very thoughtful about those decisions, uh making sure that we're really leaning into the supports that we have to think about what population growth is going to look like. Um I know the district has invested in an equity audit that has sort of hinted at some places where we're seeing um the reality of decisions that we made some time ago playing out for us now. And so I think that it's really important that we are having candid conversations about what are options, what are true and viable options right now to alleviate some of that overcrowding? So that our students can go into classrooms, our educators can be in classrooms that are manageable, um and that we as parents and community members can feel comfortable and confident that they're going to get what they need. I will tell you right now, sitting here, I don't have all of the answers for that. I think that this is shared work that we really need to think about how we might be reimagining what our middle schools look like across the district and particularly in this cluster and other clusters that are struggling with this overcrowding issue and be creative, um but also future forward thinking so that we don't find ourselves in this place again down the road. Um and again, I think it starts with making sure that we're using the data that's available to us. And I think it takes us being creative and innovative around what can we do? How can we restructure um some of our settings to alleviate that tension in the here and now, but also have plans that will make sure we don't find ourselves here um two years, ten years down the road.
Um so I guess joining the board ten months ago, um really understanding that we had not undergone a full facilities master plan in more than a decade, probably closer to two decades, and that there were uh vacant buildings that were sitting in communities and had turned into blight over a number of years, definitely um rallied me to start asking questions around processes and procedures and timelines and 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 what the process is for Atlanta Public Schools to plan. And so um one thing I know for sure is that we have started to at least kind of start rezoning schools that rezoning um new developments. So anytime there's a new development, an apartment building or something that is coming, we when we believe that there is going to be result um overcrowding challenge, we're automatically rezoning those spaces so that they don't become a part of this this um growing cluster. But I I think that one thing that we can do better and one thing we're starting to do is is communication directly with the city of Atlanta so that we can do a much better job at foreshadowing what growth is going to look like for the next five years, for the next ten years. And we aren't closing and uh releasing properties that we might eventually actually need to use to serve our students and our parents well. Um and so we want to make sure that we are engaging in that process early enough so we can make better decisions about some of the properties. But then also that we are looking at the proper utilization of the space that we do have, you know, a lot of there are a number of schools that are under capacity and are there additional ways that we can innovate and think about using those spaces differently and better to continue to serve families? Because once you hit that overcrowding, then it's it's diminishing return, right? You have larger class size, the students are not able to get their first class options. And so we really want to be able to proactively plan and prepare for that work so that so we don't hit these walls when we could have done, you know, some preventive, put some preventative measures in place.
I believe it's on me. Um this issue is is deeply personal for me. Um my son Bryce, uh who we lost uh last April, uh started his educational journey at APS at uh at Eastlake Elementary, um which is not a school anymore. Um when we moved, we moved to the Custom McDonough Geis neighborhood uh where we're right next door to Benteen Elementary. Uh and I moved here in two thousand and eleven and in two thousand and twelve, while uh Dr. Earl Davis was the superintendent, there was a big conversation about uh merging Benteen and closing it down. Um and this is something that historically had happened. There'd actually been another elementary school uh right here in Custom McDonough Geis uh that no longer exists either. Um and so we fought uh to to merge our neighborhood, Custom McDonough Geis, with Benteen uh to give Benteen the viable population it needed to remain open. Uh and just a few days ago, actually a couple of weeks ago, uh the renovation of Benteen Elementary is being completed, uh and it is still a school. However, as we have new developments over in Chosewood and we have some other things happening just across the street from Benteen, eventually down the line, there may be a conversation at some point where it comes up again about merging Benteen to another school and closing that school down. And this is something that just perpetually happens in particular communities and to be frank, communities that tend to look like me. Um and and there there is such a uh desensitation, um desensitization, excuse me, if I'm making up a word. But it seems to be that uh it's okay to do it in certain neighborhoods on a regular basis to cut people out, to merge schools, to shut them down. Um and and it's done, you know, with little remorse um in terms of what the effects are going to be long term, how it's time these growth of neighborhoods, um how it limits availability, walkability of schools. Um and and so we really need folks who are honestly vulnerable, uh who really are a part of the conversation to be at the table, especially as we go into this next year. Um you know, us losing Crem, because there's a whole third cluster that's been lost to to East Atlanta, and we're seeing the consequences of it now. Um and and so it's very important for us to make sure that we're thinking, you know, future-proofing, how we're looking at facilities, we're future-proofing uh how we're looking at our neighborhoods and our school, but then also having a high regard for protecting our neighborhood sanctity, because even with these new developments coming in, because let's be honest, the whole goal is, you know, we'll we'll close down some of these developments and then we'll rebuild them. And then hopefully the people who lived in those neighborhoods before will come back. Well, we're saying that when we build the new thing, we zone them out. So what is there for them them to come back to if they can afford it? So I I think like we we really have to have a more heartened conversation about school rezonings, about mergers, about uh shifting district lines, because there are real consequences to real people um that happen every time we make these decisions. Thank you.
Yeah, this obviously you guys know goes back a long time. Um we have had, you know, um you know, most recently, we had a facilities master plan that we didn't finish, right? So it's not finished yet. And I feel like we've done that over time, you know, trying to tackle things, but things get, you know, uncomfortable and we're just never able to finish it. Um it goes back, we there was a facilities master plan back at the beginning of the two thousands, the Build Smart Program. And at the time, you know, the the thought was, you know, into um Shivi's point about, you know, what happens when these projects, you know, the homes, you know, the developments are demolished or they're they're vacated. Uh back then, that was when the Housing Authority was demolishing, you know, a lot of our affordable housing around the city. And the conventional wisdom at the time was that the people weren't going to go very far. That was not true. And so part of what we've dealt with over time with APS is the is the result of the demolition of affordable housing and not having any of it replaced. And so it has created this cascade of, you know, um space available, you know, winnowing of, you know, enrollment in certain spaces. And we haven't been holistic about how we approach this. How are we approaching, you know, now the 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 explosive growth that's going on here in this cluster? You guys are fortunate um in the Jackson Cluster that you do have available buildings. And so those are things that could be used while you figure out, you know, how to accommodate the growth. Um but it everything is a, everything affects everything else, right? So what decisions we make here affects, you know, something in another cluster and the the what we haven't trusted the community with is to be a genuine part of the conversation and give them those, you know, clear things. If this, if we reach this threshold, then we start to consider X. And then we have a conversation together about what the trade-offs are on doing this versus doing that. We owe it to our communities to involve them. We are able to have these conversations, you know, like mature adults, you know, to figure out what our next steps are. And I just think that um we have to be much more en- engaging and holistic about our approaches to this. Um because yes, it's been a whole lot of cascading series of changes in this cluster. And we just need to be a little bit more deliberate and focused about it.
If I actually, if I start to present to my colleagues uh on the screen, I it's getting late. And so if we could keep our answers, Taylor asked us to keep our answers to a minute or so. And so if we could all, I think we're me too, but so Taylor doesn't have to discipline us and and parents who have young kids uh can 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 get to bed. Thank you all for for being with us. Forty nine people is awesome. Uh this is probably far one of the best attended events that I I've been a part of, and I've been a part of a lot of events. Uh so in 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 let me let me get right to the point. Uh you have a ton of assets in this community. You've got Cone, you've got Crem, Whiteford, you've got tons of buildings that are your that are your building. The they're not the school boards, they're your buildings, so we need to find the best and highest use for those. We we second, we need a respectful process. We cannot keep ginning people up and bringing them into a conversation and going in other direction and and like not committing. So we need to, we need to commit to a path. And the uh, you know, the the thing I always hear when I'm when I'm walking, when I'm walking the streets and knocking on doors is why is it the North seems to get what they need, but our community doesn't get that? Why? Why does Grady or Midtown get a new new building? What what about us? And I think as the enrollment uh the enrollment projections tell us, uh it's might be time for a new high school at Crem. I mean, it might be time to rebuild uh this cluster again. And I think that's commitment that we need to look at seriously and build a partnership with the community. This community has that energy. This community has that growth, and I think we need to get ahead of that. We have the resources. We just have to have the will. We have to dedicate splosh money to it, and I think that's the, I think that's the conversation that needs to happen uh as as soon as possible as parents are moving through the system. A minute. Um Ms. Ms. Olympiades. Um Michelle, I think you're on mute. Yeah, um Ms. Olympiades, you're you're still muted uh right now. We can't hear you. Um well, um while we wait for Ms. Olympiades um to 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 get unmuted, um I did just want to say um we we have one final question if the candidates are willing to stay on. We know we've kept you late. We know we started late. Um we also understand if you need to go and certainly if our participants need to go, because it is starting to get late. Um our final question is uh about teachers. Uh what are your plans to support teachers in the classroom to improve retention and job satisfaction for teachers within APS? And so we'll reverse that order again. And Ms. Olympiades, if you're able to unmute, um you would be first. Um all right, uh Mr. Zeph.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. Let me just turn my little timer on here so I can uh I can I can be respectful of the uh uh element. Good for you all for for sticking with us. Thank you. Uh I appreciate that. Look, the burnout numbers are for real. Uh you you look at survey data, sixty percent of teachers are are burned out, something like sixty five or seventy percent say they do not recommend that their their kids become teachers. Like so what, you know, so we're 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 up against it. And if you look at the reasons why they're leaving, it's because of burnout. It's not because of salary. Salary is important, but salary becomes more of an issue as burnout uh because they feel like the job's not doable. It's we need to resource our schools more. When teachers have more voice, more resources to they're reaching into their pocket to pay for 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 things in their classroom. If we can do a better job of, we have the money, we get twenty three thousand dollars a kid. We can push that money out to teachers. We can push that money out to schools. We can, we can get better resource classrooms, teachers and give teachers a say in what happens. You know, I was talking to to parents about the eighth grade math curriculum. It drives them crazy that why can't they get the curriculum that they need for their kids to get the acceleration they need? Teachers feel disempowered. It's a new day in Atlanta Public Schools when we decide to push out decision-making and money to our classrooms, which is where our kids are. Our teachers will be part of that, will be part of the solution. They'll feel more empowered. They'll be treated like professionals. They'll want to stay. We'll be the most desirable district in the city for people to teach.
Thank you. And I think do giving them an authentic voice is incredibly important, like making it so that when they serve on these go teams, when they serve on the cluster advisory teams, that they're actually giving legitimate advice to the administration because they don't feel heard. That's a big one. because they don't feel heard. That's a big one. Also continuing to give them, you know, compensation increases so that we do make ourselves the most competitive district, you know, in the metro area. We have to take things off their plate. That's what they've asked for. There are so many things that, you know, the district could take control over that we're pushing down to teachers. There are so many things that are not related to their actual, you know, teaching and learning that we're requiring them to do that we can remove from their plate. But having fewer district mandated assessments and tests is something that they've asked for. You know, there is, of course, a necessity for, you know, assessments and tests so that we can collect data. But a lot of the things that we are doing are taking them away from their teaching and learning. Providing them the opportunity to select their own professional development is another thing that they've asked for. But I think, you know, the key is just giving them the the opportunity to have their own voice, you know, and have that be heard and have that be legitimate and create a climate that is free of fear and intimidation and making that climate piece part of the superintendent's evaluation.
Thank you so much for this question. As I go around the city of Atlanta and even just, you know, via social media, I get reached out to by so many teachers who express to me their excitement for the fact that I'm running for this position on the board. I would offer to you all that teachers don't need to be given a voice. Teachers need to be given a seat. We have our opportunity to to elect our first active teacher in the classroom, and this makes a big difference. I want to be very clear about something. Education has had three eras. You have a pre pandemic education world, you have a during the pandemic education world, and you have a post pandemic education world. And if you've not been in the classroom since the pandemic, during the pandemic, then you really do not understand the nuances of the now. Now, when we talk about what we have to do for our teachers, I advocate for a teacher based salary of $65,000 in the city of Atlanta. Because beginning our teachers at $54,000, which is several thousand dollars below what HUD considers to be low income at 57,000, it is undignified. And we need to bring dignity to the salaries of our teachers. They deserve to be able to afford to live in the neighborhoods they serve in. They deserve to be able to have wages where they won't have to have a side job or a side hustle to be able to make ends meet. And this is coming from the perspective of someone who is a Clayton County teacher. I teach economics, personal finance, and government at Charles Drew High School in Riverdale. And I just started making $50,000 a year this school year, and I'm in my eighth year of education. So I I just want to point out that across the board, we're not doing right by teachers. I had an opportunity to interview Education Secretary Cardona in California earlier this year. And I had a teacher who was a mom whose son was graduating college and was about to go into education. And she was telling Secretary Cardona that she did not want her son to go into teaching, and she was speaking about it as if her son was about to enlist in the military during wartime. This is what education has become, and we have to be intentional at at the municipal level to creating the most competitive, most thriving, most warm climate for anywhere in the metro Atlanta area to be a teacher so that we will drive the best teachers in the metro Atlanta area to come be a teacher in the city of Atlanta. And that's what we're going to get done when we elect a teacher to the school board. Thank you.
So I grew up with my mom teaching at my high school. And for someone who was a biology and art teacher and started several initiatives that are still existing in my school district back home in in West Tennessee, she still had to end up filing a legal suit against the school district for unfair employment practices. And so that experience sits with me in this current position and and role. And so I think that one of the best things that we can do as a board to support teachers is to really support the superintendent in solid hiring practices for the principals and the leadership that oversees them day to day because that has a critical impact on their overall satisfaction in the workplace and the retention rates within respective schools. And I think I agree with a lot of my colleagues who have talked about, you know, the teacher pay, our teachers deserve a thriving wage. I'm sure that everyone on this call can think of one teacher that sparked something in you and created that passion for you. And so we owe it to them to have a thriving wage, not just a living wage. I would love to see not just only professional development opportunities, but opportunities for more of our bright spot teachers to share best best practices across the district so that we can have that shared learning and engagement. And then because I'm an entrepreneur, I would really love to support teachers with innovation funds because I I have seen over my 15 years of work in Atlanta Public Schools, teachers who want to do more, who have these really amazing ideas, and they have to navigate through the bureaucracy of the system to get things done. And so I would like to see us carve out innovation funds for teachers who have great ideas that are going to change our students' lives and make sure they're able to. Uh oh, was I on mute?
Just at the very end for a second, but we heard, we heard.
Did you get my innovation funds? Because that was important. No. Did you get that part? And I'm good. Thank you.
This is such an important question because we we literally cannot do school without our educators. We we cannot. This is work. This is shared work that we have to take seriously. And as someone who's been in the classroom, who made a point to go to the classroom first so that I wouldn't be creating policies or making decisions without a knowledge or understanding of what happens when we're trying to implement those things and how sometimes our policies and practices create barriers for teachers to show up and do the work. I think we're seeing the tipping point of that right now. And I I I fully appreciate Shivi's point about the different types of classrooms and and schools that we are in now. There is definitely a very different job and task that our teachers are being asked to do post pandemic or whatever this phase of time is. And so I think it is absolutely important that we are not just asking teachers for their feedback and opinion, but we are giving them actual space to shape the decisions that we're making. I I distinctly remember what it felt like to not be listened to as a teacher saying, these are the challenges in my classroom to feel like you couldn't ask questions, you couldn't ask for help because you might get put on a professional development plan. I know representing parents and students during the pandemic and knowing that our educators were often, you know, some of our our first referrals, the ones who whispered to teach to parents that, hey, there's something going on here that's not entirely right. I can't really help you in that, but maybe you need to seek out help. That our educators show up every day with a passion and commitment to do a very hard job. I will tell you, you know, I've been an attorney, I've been a teacher, I've been a coach, I've been a consultant. The only thing that's harder than teaching is parenting. I'm sure some of you all out there can can identify with that. And so we really need to professional, like treat our educators as professionals and make it safe for them to do their jobs. We have a lot of policies and think laws, et cetera, a culture that is coming in that wants to have an an outsized say in what our teachers are able to do and how they are able to masterfully execute their craft. And so we have to make sure as a board that we're balancing the needs and desires of our parents to be able to direct the upbringing of their children with what our educators know in the classroom, make sure that they're creating the safe environment that our students need to learn and grow and change. And so I really want to make sure as a board that we're supporting our educators, one, by actually allowing them to have a seat at the table when we're creating policy to let us know whether theory and practice will ever meet in what we're deciding. Two, really making sure that we're providing them with the social emotional support that they need to do a very challenging job and that we're equipping them to be able to pass that on to their students. Because if our teachers are not well, they won't be with us. But even when they are with us, they won't be able to do the work as effectively as they want to and are able to. So we really need to make sure that we're supporting them in all that we do.
Thank you so much. And I believe we may have Ms. Olympiades. I think she had some technical difficulties. Michelle, are you, are you with us? Okay, ma- maybe not. Okay, well, I just want to say, first of all, that we as a as a tumor community are absolutely humbled to have all of you here at this forum. There are so many people from other schools as well. We sent this invitation out far and wide. We have people representing all over the east side and Jackson Cluster here tonight. And I don't think anybody wandered in here without the intention to probably vote. So I think this is impactful as well. So.
Yeah, Taylor, I'm here. Sorry, it took me a minute.
No, that's no problem. Yeah. So our our last question was about teachers and improving teacher retention and job satisfaction, if you want to answer that question for us.
Well, I think we're moving in a new direction, which I'm very excited about. I think, well, I don't know what you know about Dr. Battle. But, you know, she's been with the district for almost 20 years. She has a good history. And I appreciate her being interim. I'm pushing her to do more, and she may not want to do that, which is fine, no worries. But yeah, I think we're headed in the right direction with respect to where we're going. And yes, we have a lot of work to do. I do believe in District Three, just to be respectful with respect to our district. I I think we're we're doing well. Our schools are good. We have good, we have good principals, we have good leaders. And they're, in my opinion, and y'all can tell me differently, I think they're doing the right thing. Do we have other issues across the district? Of course. And 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 that's a concern that we all need to address. So we'll take care of that. We'll try to figure out what we need to do with that. And I think that comes with leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Olympiades.
So. It's Michelle, okay? You being really kind, but it's just Michelle. So it's fine.
No problem. Moderator hat. Well, thank you so much. Once again, everybody, we have put in the chat the early voting dates. Obviously, Bessie Branham Park, right up the street from many people is a place you can go in and vote. Once again, candidates, thank you so much for being here, and we look forward to the future of APS and the APS School Board. Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you for having us.